Hi, Monty, Eda, Esq. Do solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Hi, honourable members. Do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth.
I, Chebra Karuna, do solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Well, this is a very straightforward matter. I think the committee has exhaustively looked at this matter. And the only issue for us is compensation, if I'm correct. And at the last sitting, we couldn't resolve the issue of compensation. And so they asked that the two parties should go back and see if they can come back together with a resolution or an agreement as to what is acceptable compensation in this matter. And so you are here now to tell us whether or not you have been able to agree at the settlement and to ask NDL what their offer is so that you can quickly resolve this matter. So I will start with the NDL. First of all, let me ask, has there been any meeting? No, sir, no. So since we left the other day, no meeting, nothing?
NDL, you understand, you did not bother them.
Alright, that's okay. So, NDL, what is your offer? What was offered for the 5 million?
The chairman, I want to thank sincerely for your commitment, commitment of this committee to the resolution of this matter. Immediately, we left here, finished from here. I didn't want to call my attention on my colleague here. It also provoked. In fact, he did call me. Did you think here that I announced myself as a counsel to this committee? I wanted to get his attention, to see what we can discuss. But I was provoked in a very arrogant manner. And he's telling this committee that they were on, in our usual manner, we did not bother to call for any attention. This has been a usual manner for this particular concept, this family. He escalated this issue here. He escalated the whole thing we're doing here today. He never wanted any issue to be resolved. Well, before the committee on the lower house yesterday, he was not there. The lower house had called for evaluation of the situation for them to give an award. He was not there. They were very, very annoyed because he used the whole process up to the point that they had to come and sit and they were not there. They flaunted their order for not coming before the evaluation committee, the setup, the clinic of this parliament. They refused to be there.
That, that hasn't happened.
That's not so rare.
We were there yesterday.
We were there yesterday. And that's entirely the element we're dealing with. So this, this, this issue had come up on and on and on again. But each time we're near resolution, this particular concept of this family, reneging, is the one who has made this issue very frosty. Otherwise, it has never been frosty between us and the family. The family knows that we have been supporting. We've never reneged in our obligation towards them. Where government agents, if we must say. It's not that we have all the money there that we have to pay. The little we have have been supporting this family. And why I speak in this tone, this chairman?
I'm sorry, the chairman of the country now.
Yes, please.
Alright, don't worry, just hold on. Unfortunately, I'm not able to reach the... You see, we are not going to litigate this matter today. Everything but litigation is done. We have all the facts. And we understand what the issues are. And it has been narrowed to one thing now, which is compensation. That's all, that's the matter. Now, this matter is also before the House of RAB. The House Committee on Petitions. Michael Taber is the chairman. I know him very well. I'm trying to call him now. He's probably engaged, but he'll call me back. So what I'm going to do? Do you have any offer, first of all?
Mr. Chairman, like I've said, what we have as an offer is what we can actually get from savings.
Okay. So, so what you have is still what you have.
It's what we have.
Okay, very good. So this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to call for a special meeting. You don't even have to come. I want to call for a special meeting between the Senate and the House to sit and determine how much NDL will pay. But I think that will resolve it for all. The House, I want to invite our brothers in the House of RAB and send them to sit down over the matter and talk about the issue of compensation. We will agree on, we will communicate it back. That's, that will be the order. Just open.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So that will be the order of this committee. To Mr. Chairman and members, the next case, case number two. It's from petition from Danman. Danman Samwep, that's from Nigerian police force. Is Danman Samwep here? Is Danman? Is Danman Samwep? Nigerian police force. Nigerian police force. Who is Danman Yat? Who is who is here? The petitioner. Is that the class fellow, Samwep Yat?
No, that is... That is Fats Yat.
Oh, Fats. Okay.
I, from our side, do solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give for this distinguished committee shall be the truth.
Have you testified before?
Yes, sir.
No, no, I didn't. You have not testified before?
Yeah.
You have not testified this matter before?
No, sir.
This is your first time appearing here?
No, I didn't speak.
And each time you came, you didn't speak?
No, I've never spoken.
And this is the fourth time you've come in?
Yes, sir.
And each time you came here, no one asked a question? You didn't take the oath?
I took oath, sir.
Okay, after taking the oath, no one spoke with you? No one asked a question?
No. The last time I came, we said I should present, I should adjourn the case. He did not appear again.
Police did not appear again?
I remember that. I do, sir. Police, yes, sir.
The police are here, sir. Oh, twice then? They left before. So, I mean, if they left before closing, it means we're not aware that we are sitting today. But if they were not here to the end of our hearing yesterday, it means they were not aware that we'll be sitting today. That's what it means. We can argue against them. So we can argue against them unless if we are, if we were here and told them to come today.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Honestly, this is the fourth, the fifth time I've come here. He never appeared before us. He never...
They were here yesterday.
They were not here. They were not here. They were not here. They were not here.
No one here.
You were not here.
No one here. No one again. I was not there. The legal estimate, the latest by the science.
I replied this time from Pada Mosti. This is the fifth time I'm coming. It has not been easy for me. I'm a family man. I'm not working. I'm a father. Please, I want this honourable minister to look into my request. Oh, I consider it. I took, I borrowed before I come here. I spent more than 100,000 on it. I don't have, I don't have any money to help me. I'm an offer. Please, I beg you, put it into my request and help me. It has not been easy for me. Yeah, I sat here four times, maybe the fifth time coming to come to Pada for this case.
And there were five times, no police came?
Yes, sir. First, yesterday.
Yesterday, they were here. I said the police, they were very nice. I understand your... So I think, I think we have to, we have to... You can't take decision. We can't hear it from the other side. What's the example? You can't take decision again. Since we were here yesterday and they left before we closed. I'm on the side, no one, no one enjoys the party. What is that, this? Because of the number of cases that we have faced today, no one's seen. So we have to... Will you give the justice for this one? Alright, for two. Well, we come this time for justice for this one, okay? So don't worry. So the last time you called before... So to resolve this matter, I make a point. Alright? Thank you very much. So this case of Danman Samwep, this is the John Police Force. It's a John, the grounds of hearing. So the police force will be able to come and reveal their side of the story. This case, a John, and the new adjournment, they will be committed to both parties. And that's been the order of this committee.
Case is, case number... The Natabe Beanbola, I, the man, on behalf of 2004 AfriBank, the Paris, the Central Bank of Nigeria, and Nigerian deposit insurance corporation, DRC. Please, first, NDL.
First, NDL. Are the parties present?
Yes.
Are the parties present?
Yes, present.
The petitioner, petitioner. Petitioner, not the petitioner. They're not here yet. NDIC?
NDIC, yes. Please, sir. CBN?
CBN, yes. CBN, yes. They're not here. Please, the petitioner is on his way. Who is making the order? About the time now.
I, Ambina Hom, do solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
I, Okore Wuninus, do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
I, Idemudiam Monty, do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you very much. I think this case, I've been able to go through it a little bit. The petitioner is here to speak for himself, for the results. The counsel is also not here, but you are here. For what I understand about this case, it's about pension. Whether or not it's going to be paid by CBN or it's going to be paid by NDIC. But in between, the petitioner and his handler, whose pensions are not paid. And the ball is being tossed between NDIC and CBN. And no one is actually taking responsibility as to who is responsible in paying the pension. Am I correct so far? Okay, can somebody just... What is going on?
To the extent of the petition, the pension. I think they are also claiming retirement benefits.
Yes. So educate us. Tell us, tell us whose responsibility it is to pay the pension and what other impediment they have between CBN... Were you present in NDIC?
Yes, sir.
CBN is not here now. To speak for themselves, as well as the petitioner. So you are here now. Tell us, what is the situation?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, our position, the NDIC. NDIC has consistently maintained that they are not liable to the claims of the petitioner. And this is predicated on this, on the following facts. It is their claim that they were not paid their pension and retirement benefit by their employee, the default AfriBank Nigerian DRC. The part noted is which, Chairman, that AfriBank was never dictated by the NDIC. What transpired in 2011 was the concept we call bridging. AfriBank transmitted from AfriBank to Main Street Bank under the resolution option of each bank, which is distinct from liquidation. If it had gone under liquidation, NDIC would have been...
Add to...
Yes, liquidate. As a matter of fact, NDIC would have reached the Federal High Court Lagos to mop up whatever asset that was left after the bridging. The order to wind up the affairs of the default AfriBank was granted. But that order was challenged by the shareholders of AfriBank. And they got our P, set aside that order. As we speak, there is no money on board for the bank. And then NDIC was never appointed a distributor of AfriBank. That is one. It is on this premise that NDIC is saying that they cannot be held liable to the claims of the petitioner aside what transpired between the petitioner and the default bank being a contractual relationship between an employer and employees. It's also noteworthy that the petitioner has earlier approached Lagos State High Court. They sued the default AfriBank and they lost that case at the High Court. That case, as we speak, is a subsisting valid decision of a competent court which has not been overturned. In fact, it could not have been overturned because it has ever been appealed against. That's the same matter that this vulnerable committee, this distinguished committee is being asked to look into has been metedated by the court. And the court dismissed the case of the petitioner.
Do you, are you familiar with the reasons why the court has suspended?
My lord, Mr. Chairman.
Is it on the basis of contractual relationship or because of the bridging?
No, no, the issue of the bridging. This matter was instituted when the AfriBank was a going concern. Yes, AfriBank went into elimination in 2011. The decision in the matter was given in 2012, even while the bank was in elimination. I am not serious of the facts of that case because NDIC was not a party. So I wouldn't speak about the facts of that matter. Yes, sir.
So, in your professional experience or knowledge, how does the CBN come in here?
Mr. Chairman, honestly, I would say that while they are coming after CBN because of the notion, or rather the fact that CBN is a regulatory authority. They license the bank, then they go beyond that. Beyond this, I wouldn't know why they are pressing against CBN. NDIC on this part, they are coming after NDIC because of the subposition that NDIC liquidated AfriBank.
And you say they didn't do that?
Yes, because I meant to do that. In fact, we couldn't have. But like I said, we got order, winding up order to mop up whatever asset that was left after the bridging. Because what actually happens in bridging? It is a transmission. You transmit a company to another, like I said, AfriBank to Main Street Bank. And they carry both the liabilities and assets of the default bank. The acquiring bank will assume them.
Which is this acquiring bank?
Main Street Bank, which has also transmitted to Sky Bank and now Polaris. It has some like bonds, several transitions.
So in each step of the way, each other ought to pick up the rights and privileges or the assets and liability of the company that they take over. Isn't it?
It is.
So A takes over, A takes over from B. B assumes the responsibility, right, of the assets and liabilities of A. Now C take over from D. C now also assumes the responsibilities that have been coming from A to B and not to C. Very well, Mr. Chairman. And so the final person is Polaris, who also has taken the responsibilities from A up to when it got to them. Am I correct?
You are very correct.
So why is Polaris not being a party to this? I'm going to...
Mr. Chairman, that, that was answered by the petitioner.
So bridging, bridging has completely stopped you because you didn't liquidate them. It is only when you liquidate them that you now it's like buy, take them and return them. The owner of the assets and liabilities of the company you liquidate.
This is...
So you didn't do that. It's weird, yes. And so, so all those yields now to the new person?
Very well. Even, even, assuming you would not consider that we liquidated, NDIC liquidated AfriBank. The law of insolvent, as it is, NDIC cannot, by virtue of being appointed the distributor of AfriBank, assume the liability of the bank. If this were to be so, nobody would allow him or asset to be appointed a distributor of a default company. But, Mr. Chairman, you know as well as I do, any of us in this room can be appointed a distributor. So if I knew that my appointment would translate into me assuming liability of a company I do not know anything about, I wouldn't accept that request. They should not. So what happens? NDIC is only obligated by its eleven law to pay insurance sum to depositors. Only of note is the fact that the petitioner is here and not even depositors. And they never say they are. They were former employees. So that is how it works, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Alright, I know this question about this matter. Just want to have a go with you of the relationship between you and Central Bank and all these liabilities, like everything. I didn't, I'm hearing about the bridging. I didn't know if there's another bridging. I thought it was issue of liquidation. Now that the issue of bridging comes in, if the council were here, we would have asked the council why they didn't go after Polaris, who is the natural... Because they cannot, what they have to play now, because they knew what they're buying. But they knew when they were taking over, up, 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 until the point to take over. But that is the asking for them to discuss. So what I'm going to do? What I'm going to do, I'm going to, I'm going to write our opinion as we see. Unfortunately, Danman here, CBN is not here. I advise that you bring the proper parties. You know, the jury, Polaris, and that's understandable. But if you continue this path, you're just going to plug in a camera to not appear. Alright, so what we're going to do is that this is the first time we are handling this matter. Neither the petitioner nor CBN, just you. We will address this case and give them the opportunity to come. Maybe they will contradict what you, what you said so far and the reasons why. So that we'll be able to have a complete and informed information before we come to a decision. But if it is what it is, then it's what we have just said is what we're going to do. But let's give every party an opportunity to be heard together. And so please allow us to address this. And the clerk of the committee will communicate to you the next court, the hearing date. So that we can, if both parties don't come at that time, they will know what to do. We won't continue this any time. Alright, so that will establish here.
The next case is from CV Sramak, Esq. Against Multi-Choice National Carney Protection Commission, NDI. This is here, no, the matter.
Are they here?
Yes, the petitioner is here. Multi-Choice.
Multi-Choice here.
Multi-Choice. They're not here. They're here, yes. NBC.
NBC is here.
NBC.
I, CV Rambat, Esq. Do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. shall be in truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Hi. Francisca Ayaton. You solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give to the most distinguished committee shall be in truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So let me go.
Hi, for everyone, I solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall prove the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. So who do you represent?
If I represent myself, I'm the petitioner.
Oh, you are the petitioner. I can't say petition is not here, no.
What you choose, Multi-Choice, okay.
Okay, uh, this is, okay, petitioner. You are?
National Broadcasting Commission.
N B C, yes. And there are Multi-Choice is not here. Okay. Petitioner, please tell us, tell us quickly about why you're here.
Uh, distinguished chairman, this country, I will distinguish sector. I have to. Uh, once again, my name, T V Rama Esquire. I am a lawyer by profession, a citizen of this country. Uh, wrote a petition against D S T V and, uh, N B C, National Broadcasting Commission. And the petition borders on a particular program that D S T V runs at Multi-Choice, runs every year for a number of some years now. That appears to be in violation of the constitution. Appears to be in violation of the constitution of this country, the N B C Act, as well as the N B C Court. The constitution, in chapter two of the nineteen ninety nine constitution as amended, gives, established the N B C as the National Broadcasting Commission, and gives it the power, uh, gives it the powers to make courts, that is rules and regulations, to control the business of broadcasting in Nigeria. Now, the N B C has gone ahead.
What section of the constitution in particular?
Chapter two. The, 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 the content of chapter two of the nineteen ninety nine constitution borders on the aspiration, the objectives, and directive principles of state policies. That is the mandate that the constitution gives to the national assembly, to the entire government of this country, to protect our existence as a nation. That borders on our custom, our culture, our tradition, and our moral way of life, as well as our sanity and sanctity as Nigerians. Now, all the laws written by the national assembly and other orders given by executives all boils down to this protection. Now, by the time you go deeply into the N B C Act and the N B C Court, you will see that they are all mentioning chapter two. Chapter two must be protected, must be preserved. I will now have to mention sections of the N B C Court that are in violation.
Do you have them, do you have them in your?
In my submission.
Submission?
Yes, sir. All the laws in violation, we have a lot of them, a lot of sections in violation. Very express provisions that do not need much interpretation by anybody, that a reasonable Nigerian, is a reasonable school Nigerian that can read and write. Goes through it will know that this is what this lawyer is talking about. We must preserve our morality as a nation, because the program borders on display of nudity. People coming out naked. Mister Chairman, I even have the videos, three minutes, three minutes. I will watch this episode, to give us three minutes to be able to show this thing, just three minutes. You will see this, the display of this nudity. And we have a government in this country vested in the responsibility to, to make laws to protect our existence, to make law to accord respect to our existence as human beings. A lot of countries have banned these things, this program. Immediately they saw it, they banned it, but Nigeria has accommodated it. And the reason why I joined N B C is because N B C is vested in the power to monitor things like this. We haven't been all this way. The N B C must be called to order by the national assembly, being the body that established it under the enactment that brought it, that under it into existence. That there are laws, rules, because the national assembly gave it a delegated power. In that N B C Act, the national assembly delegated its power to the N B C, to the N B C, to make rules. So it also means the rules written by the N B C, they are also enactment, part of the enactment of the national assembly under delegated legislation. So, the, 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 the Multi-Choice is under obligation to obey and respect these provisions of the law. In the event they make violation, there are also provisions in the court for sanctions, for penalties. We have people in this country that are well respected in over every part of this world. Things like this should not bring us down. Some countries have banned these things. In fact, we also have a video to demonstrate the effect, the effect of these things in our society. That some parents that cannot even control these things, they allow their children, sometimes when you visit some families, you see both parents and children watching these programs. The children are vulnerable, they cannot control themselves. So, even if you are saying it is under control, they are, the thing has gone out of hand. Does that mean that we should allow programs like, uh, porn, that is, bluefin, to be played on our national TVs or on satellites like D S T V? So that in the midnight, you can just wake up and go through it? There is no law in this country that has allowed that. As far as we are concerned, the present law is what is enforced. There is no law that allows such things, and the constitution has been affected. Whether there is a, a deliberation by anybody, anyway in this country, whether a judgment of court or company jurisdiction that allows them to be showing these things. It means that that court is in violation of the constitution, because the constitution is very clear. Sir, before you permit us to watch this. There are a lot of sections here, I don't know if you can give me time to read like two or three of them. So that I make just, uh, comments and then you watch. Thank you. I will read section one point one paragraph E of, of the N B C Court. Yes, sir, I will read paragraph F. The court requires the broadcaster to always consider what is beneficial to the audience in terms of cultural, moral, economic, social, political, social and political values of Nigerian, Nigerian society. F. The N B C Court recognizes that broadcasting and freedom of expression are intrinsically linked. However, the broadcaster shall exercise as much freedom as possible in programming without reaching societal values. I'll proceed to section three point one, ten. Let me, let me go to number eleven, under items number eleven, that is section three point nine one. Sex-related acts such as adultery, prostitution, rape, hostility, homosexuality, lesbianism, incest, and the L G B T issues are not presented except as destructive practices to be avoided and denounced. I also like to read section, that's item fourteen, section, section eleven point fourteen one. The pay subscription, subscription broadcaster shall ensure that programs conform to provisions of the court, especially the provisions of chapter three, that is programming standards on good tests and decency. Vocal barrier, abusive comment, violent, pornography, obscenity. B, the program takes cognizance of and respect for cultural sense, sensibilities of Nigeria. Yes, Mister Chairman, the sections provided for one time. If you go through these sections, there are sections of rules written by the N B C itself under the powers vested on it by the national assembly to make certain rules as delegated legislation. These laws are to be obeyed as they are. And then, if you go through the submission, there is a provision that mandates such uh, outfits to furnish the N B C with, uh, their decoder. Any company that wants to run such a, uh, an industry in Nigeria must furnish N B C, must furnish the N B C with their decoder and make it free, so that they will be monitoring their activities from their office. So that even they are way against this, uh, regulations, they will hold them responsible. So it is presumed that N B C has a copy of this free decoder on their table, that they should be monitoring some of these activities, that things like this should not happen in this country. This is almost a porn program. By the time we play it, Mister Chairman, you will agree with me that it is a clear violation of our morale, our culture, our values as a nation. We are Nigerians, we are Africans, and we must remain Nigerians and Africans. Our laws are, they are meant to suit our existence. If America or U K, anywhere, they are explaining all such, uh, such things, and no one is saying anything, that is their own culture, our own culture, in fact, religious belief, is also captured by our laws. That things like this should not be tolerated by our government.
Uh, council.
Yes, so in this, I also have prayers. Yes, Mister Chairman, my prayers here are just three. The fourth one is at your discretion. I will read the prayers, Mister Chairman. My prayer, number one is that the Senate do pass a resolution directing the N B C to immediately sanction the Multi-Choice Nigerian Limited, that is D S T V, to stop showing or doing that program on its satellite TV.
Now, we have shown that program like N B C, it's spoken all along, that you have shown that program. That's a problem.
Sir?
You are not showing this program like N B C.
Which program? Big Buddha Nigeria.
Oh, that is a program.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Big Buddha Nigeria is a program. It's contained in the submission.
Yeah, but I've not let you normalize it.
Okay, sorry for that. So, number two, direct the N B C to penalize the Multi-Choice Nigerian Limited for violating the Nigerian laws as provided in section fifteen of the N B C Court. Three, direct that the Multi-Choice Nigerian Limited drop any of its programs that have, has a similar content from its satellite programs in Nigeria. The third one is to pass any other resolution as it is deemed fit and proper in dealing with this. Supposed to be unconstitutional.
Thank you. Let me, let me hear, um, let me hear the other side. N B C.
Yes, uh, Mister Chairman, so we have a short video to.
No, no, you talk before you want to see that, but let me hear.
Thank you, sir.
Don't you mind this. They said you are.
Distinguished chairman.
They said we are, we are a player of porn, L G B T, moral, and other like. Have you completed it? Why?
Distinguished chairman, and every other person present at this hearing. Good afternoon, my name is Franta Ayaton, and I am the secretary to the commission. I'm representing the director general. And if you let me read from our submissions, please.
Do you want a copy of this?
Yes. Repetition from T V Rama, now, against the National Broadcasting Commission and Multi-Choice Nigeria over an alleged cross violation of the constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria nineteen ninety nine, Broadcasting Big Brother Nigeria program. The National Broadcasting Commission, N B C, wishes to express its gratitude to this esteemed committee for the opportunity given to us to address and respond to this important petition regarding the alleged gross violation of the nineteen ninety nine constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria as amended. The N B Act and the Nigeria Broadcasting Code, otherwise known as the Code by Multi-Choice Nigeria Limited for Broadcasting the Big Brother Nigeria program. The petitioners allege that the program Big Brother Nigeria, aired by Multi-Choice, carries ninety percent of immoral and cultural and social well-being of the nation as enshrined in the constitution. As a regulator empowered by the National Broadcasting Commission Act to control and regulate the broadcasting industry in Nigeria, we take this concern seriously and remain committed to holding the values and ethical standards in Nigeria. Acknowledge the potential impact such alleged content may have on the moral fabric of our society. N B C ensures that broadcast content adheres strictly to moral, ethical, and legal standards being our cornerstone mandate, and we're committed to addressing any laps swiftly and effectively. The code is inserting the guidelines of broadcasting, designed to balance freedom of expression with the need to protect public morals and of all societal values and standards. This is contained in clauses zero dot two dot two dot one A I of the code. Our licensees are therefore obligated to adhere strictly to the code, promoting legality, decency, creativity, innovation, and prohibit airing of content that is obscene, morally or socially unacceptable. and extroverted programs. C clause, three dot zero dot one, three dot zero dot one dot ten, three dot one dot nineteen, three dot eight dot one, three dot nine dot one of the Nigeria Broadcasting Code. Five, Multi-Choice Nigeria, Multi-Choice Nigeria Limited is a licensed pay TV that requires a subscriber to pay a subscription fee to have access to their services and content. There are different categories of nights allowed to diversify it, sir. There's a public broadcaster, there's a private broadcaster, there are the community broadcasters that are terrestrial, free to air, free to view. And then there's the D S B, Direct Satellite Broadcaster, who is also carried on the Satellite Broadcast K. And all of these are subscription-based. Apart from the fact that you pay subscription to access this content, they are also, um, under the Code, a pay subscriber is expected to provide information about pre-watershed and post-watershed programs to enable subscribers, to enable subscribers evaluate content that may be unsuitable for certain age, especially if the program appeals to a wide range of audience and also shall install what is called Electronic Programs Guide to give you information on some kind of content, and Conditional Access System, which gives you conditional access, allows you to code off what you don't want to view, and code off, and, um, and protect the children with your, with the, with the use of your, of your remote in your homes. Because NBC cannot regulate homes, can only regulate the broadcasters on its decoders. These are tools designed to give parental control to parents and indeed enable every subscriber to manage and restrict the type of content they or their children can access in order to maintain a safe and age-appropriate viewing environment. This is a global standard. Since the beginning of the Big Brother program in Nigeria, both the Big Brother Africa and the Big Brother Nigeria, the Commission has always been on alert and on its toes before and during each session of the Big Brother to ensure strict compliance with the Code. The first time we had this kind of complaints, NBC insisted that they should send codes to subscribers for those who want that content available in their booking. And people received codes. Then it was also been, it, it has also been in continuous engagement with both Multi-Choice and the stakeholders in the industry and have not hesitated in drawing the attention of Multi-Choice to any violation of the Code, both during and after program when necessary, and sanctions there, and sanctioned them on such violations. We have, um, evidence that along the line where there were, um, lapses in the, in the, during the issue of this program which runs for, for a period of, of time, they are sanctioned, they were fined, and all of that. There were even times when they insisted that they must, they must remove certain things, and they did. There were times when we insisted that for, for you to show in Nigeria, we do not want the studio in South Africa, the studio must be here so that we can walk in anytime and stop it, and they did. The Commission on several occasions received complaints on the Big Brother program, either on its integrity or regarding some content on the program, which the Commission upon investigation sanctioned and directed Multi-Choice to withdraw the content that violates the Code. Also, in the course of investigation, investigating the complaints, the Commission reviews the content, materials, and also engage licenses for classification where necessary. Please find annexes, annexes one to nineteen, being correspondence, warning, sanctions relating to the Big Brother show from two thousand and seven. As a regulator, we are committed to safeguarding the interests of the public, maintaining moral and ethical standards as contained in the Code while respecting the freedom of speech and creativity. We understand the critical role broadcasting plays in shaping societal values, and we strive to ensure that airwaves remain a platform for responsible and constructive discourse. While NBC sets the standards and monitors compliance, licensees are ultimately responsible for the content they air. And if there's any confirmed breach of the Code, NBC takes appropriate, uh, action against the licensee. Ten, while we are committed to safeguarding public trust in the broadcasting industry, we will continue to monitor compliance, strengthen awareness of broadcast standards, and ensure citizens' rights to quality broadcasting. Please be assured of our committed, commitment to holding the highest standard of broadcasting in the interest, interest of the public and our nation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so very much, I'll hand you. Um, just another slide. That's all from Mr. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, you still want to show us the video?
Yes.
I want to see that video, please. Look, just another slide.
That's like, that's like.
Yeah, it's better than. He can see from there.
I can see from there, so send that.
Raise it up, up. Okay, send that. Is there any audio?
No, there's no audio.
No audio, yes. How many minutes?
Three minutes. Yes, Mr. Chama, this aspect is, we are using this as one of the effects of this thing in our society. Yes, uh, 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 from it. Parents that are loose.
All right.
Victimized.
All right, we are true to your. You're talking, talking about the lights.
Yes, sir, can I say one more thing?
No, I, I'll give me a boat, I want to speak now. But we're not, we're not dwell on this, we're not used to hold it to dwell on this. I say so because as a attorney, in, I'm a lawyer, so I'm a native guy. And you know that in the university, it's always very interesting when we discuss, when we discuss chapter four and chapter two, all very interesting in the university. And, and that's what I says apply here. So let me interrogate this, um, this slide you just showed us. Where did you get this back from?
Where I got it from is the, some of the shows, if, are you going there?
No, 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 first, first of all.
You will see the TV screen, the, the right top, you need the screen, is the TV, uh, the Big Brother Nigeria TV. Right, Big Brother Nigeria.
Yeah, but it's, it's not indicative here, but that's not really the point.
No, it's there.
Okay.
It's there. We can, we can even forward it to you guys.
No, absolutely not.
Yes, it's there.
So, so is Big Brother Nigeria.
Yes, sir.
Program you got it from?
Yes, sir.
Okay, was it on your regular transmissions by subscription?
Look, you know, D S T V, what D S T V does is, right now, as I'm talking to you, my subscription, I'm supposed to renew it, finished like two days ago. My wife is at work, my children are already at home, right now. Now, they've been calling me to subscribe to the program, to subscribe to the D S T V for them. So I do, you have to wait a couple minutes, you understand? Now I refuse to do that, I said, because until when my wife is at home, she closes and goes back home, then I, I'll renew it because she has to be around till morning three. You know what we are watching, because we don't want.
Can you not, can you not turn your remote? Can you not turn your remote, uh, prevent them from watching what they want them to watch?
No, sir, through my remote, if, if, that is if I know how to do it. But in the event I don't know how to do it, it will be there. And again, sir, most fundamentally, what we are talking about is the breach of our law, not that. not that.
No, I'm, 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 I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure. I assure you, don't look at this thing before I can read this room. Look, you can see your position and see where you're coming from.
Yes, sir.
Chapter four, which is justiciable, chapter four by constitution. We're talking about the freedom of press.
No, it's not, basically, if you, if you look at, it's talking about.
Chapter four. So now you write the freedom of expression and the press.
Yes, and.
If you pull that, if you pull that and read it.
Yes, sir, the freedom of the press, the rights we have have restrictions.
What are restrictions, sir?
If you, if what the law.
And restrictions based on morality, religion, or what I mean.
No, sir, if you're right, the law gives you right, if you don't have expression, you will not use that expression to be abusing people with a bringing name.
Agreed, agreed, so, so for you, for you, this is an abusive contact, the right?
Yes, it is, because it is immoral.
So immunity, okay, for you.
We can see all those things there.
For you.
Operating to the board.
Okay, for you, it's immoral, and it's abuse of your rights.
Sir, there is a word used in this law, I want to draw your attention to. I don't know who as AI can get the meaning of this word, obscenity.
We all know the word obscenity.
Okay, this is the law written by the National Delegated Legislature.
So, so what you consider obscene, sir, what you consider obscene?
With due respect to this committee, that's the reason why I applied for this slide edition.
Obscure, serious?
Yes, my, my admiration, not be abstract.
It's not abstract at all, I asked him this question, how did you get it? It's through a subscription.
Yes, sir.
So it is not something that you, you, you stumble over? You don't stumble into it, you just turn on the TV, boom, it's there, it's not going in it.
There are some.
You know how you make, let me.
That, that one.
Sir, I'm talking, I'm talking, just, just talking, turn off your mic. It is not a program that you stumble over or into when you get home and you just turn on the, turn on, turn on the TV. It is something that deliberately would subscribe to, but paying a fee so you can have access to it. If it's something you consider, quote unquote, obscene to you and your family, why didn't you resist from subscribe, subscribing to it?
Let me respond. We have a government mandated under the Constitution to protect ours as a nation.
Yes.
They are to make laws for us to protect our interests.
Yes.
Now, that was one of the stated establishment of the NBC, the NBC Court thereafter. These laws are provided to protect us from such harm. Now, if the actors now invented some concept to convince us to accept things.
Concepts such as?
Bringing code that you can just go and subscribe and do this law before it will be said that you accept. This is our nation.
Counselor.
The, the government protects all the air and the land.
Counselor, can you balance for me?
Yes, sir.
The interest of those who also have the freedom to watch what you want to watch, and those who do not want to watch what others not to watch.
Yes, sir.
How do you, if, as a governor, it has to balance?
Yes, sir, we have the internet where people access things from their home without any control, because government has not achieved in this country.
Are there obscene, are there obscene images in, in, in internet?
Yes, because government is not controlling it, government is not controlling it.
So this one now that government can control, government says you cannot see unless you want to see it, and so you want to see means you subscribe to it, and then you watch it. And if you don't, and if you don't pay, like you just said, in two days, uh, your subscription is almost, is almost, uh, gone, right? Because you haven't subscribed, and so they cut it off.
Sir, what is the?
So now if you go back and subscribe, then you want it.
Sir, what she's even saying is this, sir.
No, no, not what she's saying.
There are some subscription you do, that what DSTV even does in this country, you subscribe something that you don't, when you, you pay, let's say six thousand something, they have the booking that is made for six thousand something, there are some programs that you don't even need them, but they mandate it on you that you must pay for it. That's why we pay for all those things, that is even in itself, that is even in itself, sir. Another way of imposition on Nigerians that we watch what we don't, we subscribe for what we don't want, and no one is saying anything, sir, with due respect, we have a government in this country. I am a lawyer called by the Nigerian bar, the body of benchers.
Who you call?
Yes, body of benchers.
Who you call?
Thirteen, two thirteen.
Twenty thirteen.
Yes, twenty thirteen.
I was called nineteen thirty five.
Okay, sir. Now, sir, what I'm trying, where, where I'm heading to is this, sir, that we have a government that will give them the money under our constitution to protect us as citizens. What they have done to us is to give us laws, good laws, that we have them in place, which we appreciate. The problem we're having now is the implementation of that law, that will, will be left in the hands of some actors to decide for us how this law should be implemented, honestly, to me as a Nigerian, as I have children, that's why I'm bored at, I am disturbed, when I watch what I show those children doing. At times, we reach these children without knowing, some families, you go, you sit there, sitting down, watching these things with their children, these children are innocent. How, what can our government give to protect these children? Because these children will grow up with these things, they will go to school with our own children, the same school, and they will influence our children one way or the other. So even if you are saying you are not there, others are there, and they will influence your children directly or indirectly, so it's still coming back to this country, whether we like it or not, we are struggling to grant some of the, the ins.
Uh, thank you, thank you, turn off your mic. Madam, do you have one other thing to say?
Yes, just a few clarifications, sir. I want the distinguished committee chairman to note that for every content on the classified channels, for every content on the subscription channels, there's an age restriction, there's an age classification, to know what is okay for twelve and above, what is okay for sixteen and above, what is okay for parental, what will require parental guy, and what is eighteen and above. And in spite of that, there's also the conditional access, which I said in the code, um, that can be coded of, for instance, where you have children, and now children are on holiday, and you don't want your children to watch, you can code your, your decoder, this is mandatory, this is mandatory before the subscription channel is even approved, that I can code in my house and say anything classified as fourteen and above, I don't want it visible in my house. And when I am not around, the children can watch safely, they can watch cartoon, they can watch safely, without, uh, any content that is classified as fourteen and above, um, released to them. It's only by my code, if I come in and I probably release the code, the adults in the house may be able to watch. So it's, it's, um, all of these steps are taken to provide, uh, families safe space. And in spite of all of these, um, uh, uh, steps, it's even also, I want, I want the petitioner to note that what he did here now is even a violation, because contents like this, content that is graded eighteen and above, is not allowed for public viewing. We don't allow, um, it is incumbent on, um, DTH licenses, like MultiChoice, like Starti, uh, and all the other, is strong and mighty, to make sure that their content is not shown at eateries, in hotel lobbies, and all of public spaces where people who don't, I mean free, where you have free viewing. So it's, it's, it's only available to you as a person, despite the fact that you subscribe. Subscription is not just what allows you to watch it, is, there's also the conditional access within your control, to know what, in my house, Big Brother does not show. I am a content regulator, I monitor in the office, so if I want to monitor, I'm in my room and I monitor, to be able to see what is wrong, what is, what is not correct there. But in my house, my family does not watch Big Brother, even as I work in the NBC, but I watch, I have, uh, uh, content of the MultiChoice in my house.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, I think we have exhausted listening to both parties, for this is a very straightforward, uh, issue. This is the Senate Committee on Ethics, Privileges and Public Petition. Yes, under the Constitution, we have the right to hear any matter brought forth by any citizens of this country, against any persons or institutions, and the Constitution gives us the right to look and hear into those matters, and advise the Senate as a whole, uh, flenary of our decisions, of our such matters. I have, all we have listened to is, is clear, direct, for me, there's issue here of freedom of press, freedom of expression, and we also have individual freedoms that we're talking about. Petitioner is talking about some freedom, freedom of his children, his family, from watching, quote unquote, the Big Brother show, which he considers as obscene, and he has shown slides of the obscenity in his view, uh, which we have watched. Uh, but we also listened to the respondents, NBC, who have here told us of the steps taken by NBC to protect the homes from teenagers and those who are not supposed to watch, from watching such programs, such as subscription and coding of these programs. And so, I just, I know, and I know that everyone of us has a, has a right over every issue, but where one's right stops, the other ones, the other person's right begins, and so it's difficult for this committee to consider what is moral, what is immoral in this context. And since we are discussing a matter of a very serious constitutional issue, I would advise that the petitioner take this matter to a regular law court, so it can have a robust conversation, so that the landmark case can be treated, and this should be taken, which all of us will bond by. But as far as this committee is concerned, we are not convinced that we should stop NBC or invite NBC or, or, uh, compel NBC to either strike out a license or do something other than within their regulations to do. If you are not satisfied because you believe it's against your rights, I respect that, but the committee is not of that opinion, and so we advise that if you believe that it's something that you truly want to pursue, to pursue this case in the regular law courts, and that would be the strongest comment. Next. The last case for today is the case number five, a case from, quote, the new order, Esquire, Ramby Atwell, Junior, Ronta, the president of, Marit and Le Corombe, is the best candidate of the matter, which is the one of the committee. This is Junior Ronta. Good day. Yes, sir. I took all the rules of Esquire, you solemnly swear that evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Hi, this, Mrs. Chinyar Ronta, do solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. I would just advise that, um, the, um, the, um, right, Council for Resolution of Right Forwarding of Nigeria, say the code our institution is, uh, that they are not supposed to be here today. This is first mention of the case. And as, since in our nature, we want to hear both sides at least conversely at the table before we come to the resolution. Since they are not here, this is the very first mention of the case, um, it would be unfair for us to take one side and have the other side, uh, seated, to hear what sort of side to say. So, if I say go ahead now, let's hear you, we, we adjourn again, and come back, we adjourn it, and you know, Peter said again, I don't think it's, uh, that is necessary, so I would advise that we take the mandate and we write a strong letter to, to, to the respondents to make sure they, they attend the next hearing, in which case both sides will be able to converse their matter for us, and hopefully they will have a full, uh, committee members present. All right, so that will be my advice, unless if I have anything to say, please say anything.
Mr. Chairman, there is actually nothing too much to add. The committee sees it overriding, uh, during the short-term care of this matter at the moment at this level, so we advise by the advice of the committee, but we respect the craving of the committee to blend up with the shorter dates to come back, considering the nature of our petition, of our complaint.
Well, the problem is that we are going on holidays, we are going on holidays, but Christmas holiday, I don't see this matter coming up before the end of the year, because you don't see anybody here. If I'm sitting on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you come back here, you don't find, you don't find many persons here. And so, uh, John, we, the earliest adjourned date in twenty twenty five, which is one of the time, all right, that's, that's all I can do.
And the duty they're going to.
Thank you. So, uh, the case of, um, the case of Mrs. Chinyar Ronta against the, um, Council for the Revolution for Rights Forwarding in Nigeria, CRFFN, that came up today, we adjourned this matter because the respondent, which is the CRFFN, is not present, and this being the very first hearing of this matter, we adjourned this matter for both parties to be present at earliest sitting date of this committee. The next hearing date will be complicated, uh, to both parties, but I'm sure it's going to be as soon as possible, and that will be the initial of this committee.